Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our study session today. Today we'll be focused on budget discussions, our favorite topic for every department in City Hall. We have the mayor with us today, and of course, Mr. Boston. Welcome are the council members, and we have a couple that are online.
Paul is online.
Councilmember Dylan's online, and possibly councilmembers at home will be joining us lately. So with that, welcome, Mayor, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Council President. Well, today, why don't we look at the agenda for the day? We are going to talk a little bit about the current economic national picture and how that may be having some impacts on where we're headed. The general fund six-year forecast, and a little bit about some of the digging into a key, a couple of our, a couple of the areas where costs are really driving above our projected revenue level. And just to set a little context here, you know, again, we, we all, I think, recall, last year, a tough year, we had a structural deficit, we took on during the course of the year expenditure reductions, we asked the public to support a community safety sales tax with targeted investments in both our public safety, traffic safety, fire capital. So we were pleased to have success there. We are now at a place where, for a variety of reasons, which we're going to get into, another gap is emerging, and it's coming at us pretty fast, and it's partly on the revenue side, and it's partly on the expenditure side. But once again, we're going to have to take some fairly significant actions to bring those lines together, and that's ultimately our responsibility. So we want to give you a little bit of, so I'm just kind of setting the table here that this is the not-good-news session. We obviously are looking at this at a time when we still can start to make corrective actions and look at a variety of options, and that will be what we need to come up with over the next few months. But I thought I would just go ahead and give everybody the bottom line upfront, that it's mostly not good news. So let's start with the national picture. Just going to say a little bit about this, but turn it over to the team that's really digging in on how the national picture and the state, federal and state budgets are affecting the city, but the economic trends at the national level are concerning, let's put it that way. Interest rates have remained high, and that has a downward impact on construction, has a downward impact on consumer activity because they have to pay high interest rates on their credit cards, so that discourages spending in other areas. Inflation has moderated, good news, but it's not still at the target rate nationally. So as long as inflation is not at the target rate nationally, fed, federal monetary policy will probably not lower interest rates. That's how that ends up working together. And when you add into that a couple of the other pieces, uncertainty around tariffs, you see this picture here, which is the Consumer Confidence Index at the national level, which clearly dropped precipitously during COVID, but then rose rather dramatically, and now we're back into the, into the downward cycle there. And consumer confidence directly impacts spending, and consumer spending of the gross national product is the, is two-thirds of the gross national product. It's the old Econ 101, consumption plus, plus investment, plus government spending, and, and export imports. So that big piece is not looking good right now. Nobody's saying that we're in a recession yet, but it's slowing, and so whether or not that means we're about to go into a recession, or whether we just maintain sort of a slow growth rate for a while, I think is a subject of debate among economists. So now we're going to turn to specifically the federal picture, and I, Alex, are you taking that one on?
I think Brian Christensen is on the call to talk a little bit about that.
Okay, great, we'll go ahead and introduce Brian.
Yeah, so you all know Brian, with Desmond Consulting Group, our federal lobbyist. Brian, are you there? Can you hear us? Are you still seeing him, Jacoby?
Yeah, online, I just requested that he unmute.
Okay.
What do you ask for him again?
Brian, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, sorry.
Perfect.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Yeah, so we obviously took some hits early administration with a couple of grants, grants that were canceled, both with the Tech Hub and the EPA grants, Community Change Grants. The Tech Hub grant process, from our understanding, will still be recompeted, and so the region would have an opportunity to go forward and reapply for that funding. The EPA Community Change Grant was one of, you know, about 790 grants within the EPA that were canceled nationwide. That seems like a more tenuous thing for us to pursue in the future. And then obviously, we just got done a couple of weeks ago with the Trump administrations and the congressional Republicans, big tax and spending cut bill, and, you know, clearly major concerns over what that's going to mean in terms of Medicaid impacts, as well as SNAP benefit impacts as well. And then moving on to the appropriations process, so now that we have wrapped up the tax and spending bill, Congress, Congress is really turning its attention to the FY26 appropriations process, and both Senate and House are starting to mark up their respective bills. The House today is marking up its transportation HUD appropriations bill and its energy and water appropriations bill, the FUD bill, as we refer to it as, obviously has huge stakes for the city and a lot of your partners in the community with a lot of the HUD spending. And so, you know, it looks like, you know, we're starting to dig into that bill. It looks like from a voucher, housing voucher perspective, it maintains a lot of the existing vouchers, tenant-based and project-based, which is decent news compared to what it could be, but obviously, you know, the, the goal should be to continue to expand those programs given the, the housing crisis in the country. You know, not surprisingly, the House Republicans have gone along with some of the reductions around CDBG and home. The Senate, given its makeup, tends to be a little bit better on those two issues around CDBG and home, as well as some of the broader HUD supports. And so we do not have a schedule yet for the Senate Appropriations Committee to take up the FUD bill, but I would expect that those numbers around CDBG, home, some of those other safety net programs to be better than what's in the House bill. You know, stepping back a little bit, real quickly, you know, we did end up with a continuing resolution for all of FY25, which carried over the FY24 funding levels. I am having a hard time seeing how Congress lands the FY26 appropriations plane again this year, which could mean that we're just in another continuing resolution situation for FY26. And so we're, we're happy to dive into that and, and, you know, give you guys a longer presentation at some point about what we would expect those impacts to be. So happy to take questions, but yeah, still, still diving in a little bit to the, to the FUD bill that was, that's getting marked up today in the House.
Thanks, Brian. If you don't mind, before we go to questions, I just want to call on Dawn real quick and have her, while this slide is still up there, just talk a little, make some of the abstract big numbers a little more local in terms of their anticipated impacts here.
Yeah, so I assume Trump, these are what is included for Spokane, and this is about a 50%.
Dawn, you're going to have to come over a little bit so we can all hear you, please.
But that's, so that's about a 50% reduction in our COC, YHGP. And then an additional 500,000, our so reduction in CDBG. The COC piece there will be the biggest impact. I think one thing that will be helpful to keep an eye on is what happens with the proposed restructure of the COC, which has included a contemplation of changing what interventions are available within the COC portfolio. But nonetheless, a reduction to that point will have a pretty substantial impact on how we primarily fund our current core housing operations in Spokane, as well as our HMIS data system and our core mega entry systems, all three, youth, families, and singles. But that's a, that's a pretty, there'll be a deeply felt cut.
And Skylar, anything to add? I know I stole this slide from your stack, so is there anything you want to add on it?
No, it kind of was already presented, is this is so new, like, early in the process, there's still going to be much more of us, because it's coming back. The big one was is that we thought CDBG was just going to be cut all in general, and that's already included, so that's really good news. Home was taken out, but there is a push to, obviously fight to get it back for people, so I would, I'd take this with a grain of salt where we're at right now. We don't know where this is going to go. They, originally, they said COC, YHGP, ESG is all going to be combined into one, and then reduced. Doesn't look like that's happening either, so I just think a lot of this is still on the table, what's going to happen. But I think the positive that we take out of this is that CDBG was included in this round.
And we did, just for the, the last COC round was a two-year round, so we should not have had to compete again. But word is now being put out that we will have to compete again for COC funds, which hopefully that application would come out imminently. Usually it's already out by now for any round of applications, so also, once this is finished, I'm assuming they'll tell us when we can compete for FY26 funds.
Are you expecting the application to be different, is why we're recompeting again?
They haven't been clear about any of that. My assumption is based on the reductions and the prior intent, as Skylar mentioned, to combine it with ESG and remove COC interventions, that we would see a change in use, potentially, yeah.
You can see a change in use, and then also with some of the environment, there is the sanctuary DI, other information that DOJ's seen that could impact this as well.
So with the mayor's lead-in, these cuts come to fruition, there really are no resources for us to backfill.
Not on the COC, no. CDBG, we would just award less. Obviously, the challenge with COC is that those funds have been pretty much in a renewable status for most of our projects for eight years.
YHGP are new.
YHGP is newer, so, and the YHGP is a youth homeless demonstration project that's a part of the continuum of care, but those COC funds would be a, a non-renewable source all of a sudden, which would not have a local replacement.
Just wanted to, this is a slightly different topic, but wanted to let you know that Alex and I just met with Dr. Passerini, the new president of Gonzaga, and we are going to stay very engaged with the Tech Hub, and so we definitely intend to reapply and recompete for those Tech Hub dollars. So ideally, that will happen this fall, correct, Alex? And a decision would be made next spring? So we'll see where we're at with respect to the Tech Hub. And I also met with Dr. Cantwell at WSU and Dr. McMahon at Eastern, and there's not good news on that front either. All, all three universities have enrollment challenges, demographic and policy issue, and the cuts to federal research funds in particular are having an impact on WSU that will probably be felt on the Health Sciences campus fairly soon.
Before we transition into the more local level, do we have any questions for Brian, so that he doesn't have to hang on the entire time?
All right, you're off the hook, Brian. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. I'll probably stick around a little bit. Thanks.
Wonderful. So just transitioning more over to the local, going to have the Budget Department and their staff talk about that.
So I'm Connor Thorne with the Budget Department. I'm going to speak briefly on sales taxes. So historically speaking, Spokane and the state of Washington followed a similar growth pattern in regards to sales tax. In '24, specifically Spokane and the state incurred year-over-year growth of 0.95% and 1.09% respectively. For Spokane specifically, years 2015 to 2019 saw relatively stable growth. 2020 and 2021 were obviously very COVID-driven, and the city has seen a downward trend from '22 through '24, brought on by historically high inflation, which peaked in 2022. The '25 and '26 forecasting growth rates are based on a combination of historical actuals and feedback from the Washington Economic and Revenue Forecast Council, or ERFC, and they release revenue forecast projections quarterly, and the city's sales taxes are reviewed monthly as year-to-date results come in. And thus far, year-to-date retail and healthcare have really been the most successful industries that we're seeing in the budget office, with retail growing at about 1.98% year-to-date and healthcare at 38.63% year-to-date. So original growth targets assumed about 2% in 2025 and 2.9% in 2026. And you can see in the chart, those numbers have, you know, obviously been downgraded to 1.85%, 1.76% in '25 and '26 respectively, and that's based on the ERFC feedback that we are getting. And they factor in many different pieces into their projections, job growth, personal income inflation, and exports, just to name a few.
And Connor, can you just mention where we're at? And I know many, many of the people in the room get these monthly updates, but where we're at year-to-date for year-over-year growth?
Um.
I think we're, it's just shy of 2% below 2024, if I'm not overall?
The, the overall is actually less than, it's less than 1% negative at the moment.
Okay.
Yeah, so 0.41%, if I, if I remember correctly.
All right, perfect. So switching over to some of the, the local expense hits, that's broadly speaking, Connor's broadly speaking about the revenue side of things, but more intimate to talk about the, the expenditure increases that we're seeing year-over-year is First Fire Chief Julio Burke.
Talk a little bit about our overtime. See, we came into '25 proposing a $6.4 million overtime budget. The adopted budget was at 4.97. So we, early on, considered several operational changes to be able to bridge that. With the constraints of the CBA, none of those operational changes were deemed feasible without an impact to service delivery. So I want to take just a minute and explain a little bit of staffing and how and why we staff the way that we do. So a lot of this is not only contractual driven, it is best practice. Spokane Fire Department is by no means overstaffed operationally. So an engine, which we have 14 of in the city, is staffed with three people. A truck has to have four people on it, we have five of those in the city. Our small fleet, our, our alternate response units are medics, we have three of those in the city, they're staffed with two. We have one safety officer, that's just one person on a light fleet, and two battalion chiefs, which is staffed with one person. So we have to have 71 people on duty every day, so that equates to 284 operational FTEs. And I'm just speaking operations, so this isn't prevention, this isn't SIU, this isn't any of the other divisions. So our target relief pool that is based on a 2023 breakeven analysis study that was done is between 28 and 44, which would give us 7 to 11 relief pool per shift. The reason for the range, we recommend that that breakeven analysis be done at least on a biennium basis, because our workforce is going to change, so they're going to age, which is more vacation usage, and we should always be looking retrospectively at what our actual sick leave usage was. So having that range allows us to keep a, a healthy relief pool. So our current today operational FTEs filled is 297. We have made conditional offers for a second recruit academy that will start in September, that was not planned. Mayor Brown was able to make that happen to where we can bridge the gap. We had, the, the forecasted number of retirements and separations, I, I missed on. Our recruit school that we did, recruit school 2025-1, we only graduated 10, we started with 18, so we had a higher-than-normal attrition rate, and we had a higher-than-expected retirement rate in 2025. So assuming that all 20, which our average attrition rate for all of our recruit academies is 15%, I would guess that we would graduate somewhere between 15 and 17. That would put us at 312, starting in January, FTEs filled. With the, with all of the conditional offers, that puts us at 317. So that range for our healthy relief pool is between 312 and 328. So we would be right at the low end of that, but going into '26, it is healthy for us to do one recruit school per year that is varied on the number of FTEs that we're reaching out to, to fill that gap.
Real quick, Julie, before you go on, just to, just to confirm, that 71 minimum staffing on duty daily, that's not just an operational best practice, that's also mandated in the contract?
That is contractual, yes.
And, and also, just to editorialize some of the math, obviously, there are four shifts within FIRE, so that's where the 284 comes in, and as we can probably imagine, there's roughly 2,000 hours in a workable year, so put that into context as we're going through these next slides.
And looking at the, just go back real quick, the, the pie chart to the right, that is all of '24 and year-to-date '25, those are the hours. So again, in operations, 87.1 of the hours are worked are regular time, and then 12.9 are overtime. Next slide. So I also want to talk about non-operational overtime. This one, a lot of times, kind of gets swept to the side, because a lot of these are not necessarily contractual overtime, but they are sometimes either required because we are the authority having jurisdiction, or through WAC, or again, just through, maybe not mission-critical, but mission-important. So such things as investigations, fire investigations that occur after hour, our special event coverage, while that's a small percentage, it's not currently budgeted, nor do we cost-recover any of our special events. We have specialty team training and certifications that are not able to be always completed on shift and keep our response reliability for 911 calls adequate. So if you look at that bottom chart, what that's telling us is, on average, I have, and again, looking retrospectively, '24 to '25, almost 10 overtime shifts for operations. A half an overtime shift is related to something to do with training, almost a half is related to, to some of our 40-hour folks that are uniformed members, two-tenses, special events, and then SIU and other make up the difference. So looking at that, 11.2% or $660,000 of overtime is not somebody in a fire truck, but mission-important overtime. Next slide.
And again, just to say, to, to ring home the, the hours per FTE, so we're looking at 131,000 contractually obligated hours. If you divide that by 2,000, right, when we're talking about a relief pool, that's what we're, those are the hours that we're discussing.
I want to briefly hit on trades, because while this should not be any additional cost to the city, it ends up being. So a trade is an internal scheduling practice that allows a firefighter to swap an assigned shift. So if I'm scheduled to work Friday and I don't want to necessarily use leave, I can trade with Alex, and the promise is I'll work a future shift for Alex. By contract language, all trades must stand on their own merit. The emphasis and underline is my emphasis, when the trade is approved. And so that's what, when the trade's approved, we have no way of knowing where our staffing's going to be, or I have no way of knowing that that person is not going to work. And so what ends up happening is that we have a trade time not worked, so somebody calls off, they expend their sick leave or their vacation leave and don't show up for the shift, we still have to fill that assignment with overtime. So that person is expending a sick day or expending a vacation day, but it's cost, and that's straight time, we're paying time and a half for that. So I'm sorry, the slide did not, did not show very well here, but basically, 7% of approved trades end up being not worked, which means we are paying time and a half to, to fill that particular, particular shift.
Chief Ober, excuse me, when you talk about approved trades, what is the process? Let's help us understand the process.
They go through their chain of command.
Then you go through a chain of command.
So they go through their lieutenant or captain, and if it, if it meets a, a certain benchmark, then the battalion chief has to approve it, and then if it hits another higher benchmark, the deputy chief has to approve it. Next slide, please. So again, looking at the things that, that are non-working, and I want, out of all of these categories.
Sorry, real quick, Julie, just also, that trade policy is not, not an administrative policy, that's also a, a specific function of the contract.
So these non-working categories, so obviously, vacation, sick time, injury, those are on-duty injuries, PFML, the trade not working, and then union business. All of these are really outside of administrative ability to control. Vacation is within the contract, obviously, sick and other. I point out PFML, again, while the city is not paying for that, we are having to fill back that position. So that is an unfunded, non-working code that we are filling that particular role in. The table to the right shows what that equates, and that again, is just 2025 year-to-date. So on average, it's six people that have been off per shift for vacation, almost five for, for sick day, and this is per shift. The, the other includes funeral leave, jury duty, emergency military leave, such things like that. Almost one is off per day on injury, just over half is off for PFML, and almost a half is, is off per shift, the trade not working. So all of these, again, are, are difficult because they're either contractual or, or legally obligated, that we cannot deny these leaves. So what are we doing? Obviously, I, I've been saying this for some time, we're continuing to build a relief pool that's based on.
Chief Oberg, excuse me, when you talk about approved trades, what is the process? Let's help us understand the process.
They go through their chain of command. So, they go through their lieutenant or captain. And if it, if it meets a, a certain benchmark, then the battalion chief has to approve it. And then if it hits another higher benchmark, the deputy chief has to approve it. Next slide, please. So, again, looking at the things that, that are non-working, and I want, out of all of these categories.
Real quick, Julie, just also, that trade policy is not, not an administrative policy. That's also a specific function of the contract.
So, these non-working categories, so obviously vacation, sick time, injury, those are on-duty injuries, PFML, the trade not working, and then union business. All of these are really outside of administrative ability to control. Vacation is within the contract, obviously sick and other. I point out PFML, again, while the city is not paying for that, we are having to fill back that position. So, that is an unfunded, non-working code that we are filling that particular role in. The table to the right shows what that equates, and that again, is just 2025 year-to-date. So, on average, it's six people that have been off per shift for vacation, almost five for, for sick day, and this is per shift. The, the other includes funeral leave, jury duty, emergency military leave, such things like that. Almost one is off per day on injury. Just over half is off for PFML, and almost a half is, is off per shift, the trade not working. So, all of these, again, are, are difficult because they're either contractual or, or legally obligated, that we cannot deny these leaves. So, what are we doing? Obviously, I, I've been saying this for some time. We're continuing to build a relief pool that's based on current breakeven analysis. So, as, as I mentioned, the current, the second recruit school that was not planned, but we have been able to get approved. We've made 20 conditional offers. Assuming an 85% pass rate, we'll pass 15 to 17 out of that. So, that would give us 312 FTEs of January. That, that's including the 297 that we have now, and then the, again, the 15 to 17. Going back into a recruit academy in 2026-01, and then Matt Boston and I have been having conversations to try to develop something similar to what you all allowed for PD to do a couple of years ago, and have basically some recruiting FTEs that aren't necessarily funded, but allow us to at least recruit and have those ready for when we have the quarter-one and quarter-two retirements and separations.
Thanks. And just, just to mention a couple of things, the presentation, the breakeven analysis that, that Chief Oberg is referencing is the, the report that was given to previous council back in '22 or '23 by Ozzy to, to understand what that breakeven analysis would be. Just, just in that delta between the 312 that we currently have and the contractually obligated 284 that, that we, we need, right? We're looking at, I don't know how many hours, but it's, or it's roughly about 60,000 hours. If we're, if we're seeing what the demand is based on those leave requests that we're getting, that we're, that we're legally, either legally or contractually obligated to do, there's still going to be a demand, and that relief pool truly is key while battling the attrition that we're, we're constantly seeing.
So, Chief Oberg, under the prior administration, we were struggling with FIRE overtime. And at one point, there was discussions about some of our stations going dark. Has that come up in conversation?
I mean, we looked at several operational considerations to be able to bring this in. And again, within the constraints of the current contract, none of those were available without reducing service delivery. So, we have not made that into discussions that have made it all the way to Local 29, which obviously would have to be in that, nor has it made it to year-to-date. But lots of considerations and formulas were looked at to how we could bridge that gap.
Because you could theoretically, to your point, you could say, okay, that staff is, is going into the relief pool, but based on the contractual obligation, you still need 71. So, even if, if those people are in the relief pool, you need at least 71 working any given shift. And that's, that's what Chief Oberg has mentioned. So, moving again back to more local, turning it over to Jessica Stratton and her team.
Sure. So, currently, there are a lot of concerns related to our relationship with the county. We've threw a, a few of them up there. The jail, we're going to be talking about in the next two slides. But basically, the jail cost for the County Detention Services Center, it's the charges to the city of Spokane are outpacing our current population growth for the inmates. So, we'll talk about that. And then TREC, of course, unknown, the transition costs that come with, I believe it stands for Public Safety Answering Point, which is basically dispatch. Unknown right now, still exploring, but it's something that we have on the radar for financials. And then public safety facilities. So, the city of Spokane does utilize some of the public safety facilities over on the county campus, and as you are well aware, there's been some deferred maintenance out there. So, that's still a bit unknown. So, diving in.
And even beyond deferred maintenance, also new requirements, like Clean Buildings Act and things like that, that we are currently engaged with Scott and the team over there about how they are determining what to charge us.
Jessica, when was our last jail contract signed? I know it's been maybe a couple of years that we do not have a actual signed contract with the jail. We're just on old cost.
It's been similar, so it's, it's been maintaining the previous contract, and that was the contract language, without a, a signed contract, and there was negotiations occurring in the previous administration that, that stopped when there was discussion of the two-tenths for the jail measure. Those conversations have not restarted, so the contract itself mirrors until both sides agree.
But no ability to go back with any retro pay or compensation? If, when the contract is negotiated, agreed upon, it would go back to the time the old one had technically expired?
I couldn't give an illegal analysis on that, but it's definitely something that we could explore.
Okay, so we're going to talk about the Criminal Justice Assistance Fund. This was established in 2007 for criminal justice purposes. The revenue comes from the state's criminal justice sales tax, which is the 0.1%. So, although 10% goes to the county, 90% is shared with the cities on a per capita basis. So, City Spokane gets a, you know, a good chunk of that. The intent, apparently, I wasn't here in 2007, was that the sales tax would be received, and it, it would go toward the city's share of the county's jail costs. And so, that's what it's been doing for years. And this was more than sustainable at the time. The sales taxes were coming in higher than the jail cost. So, the fund itself built up a healthy fund balance. Over time, that healthy fund balance became alluring, especially during the financially distressed period that was the pandemic. And this fund was used for other things. PD's Axon contract was paid out of this fund, then the electronic monitoring for probation services, and then interpreter costs. And finally, during 2022 and 2023, over $6 million in homeless services and administration was paid out of this fund. That was legally allowable from the state's 2021 fiscal flexibility bill. So, now, after years of supporting PD court's homeless services, the fund no longer has enough cash or fund balance to pay the monthly county detention services bill. The jail costs being allocated to the city of Spokane simply outpace the sales tax revenue that we are receiving from the state. So, as it stands, we are currently sitting on two months of bills because we do not have cash to pay them. The fund will need an influx of funding to survive not only this year, but of course, going forward. So, this is, this is the, the major graph that just shows, shows the total jail costs have been going up. The sales tax is basically plateaued, maybe gone down, and that, we, the city, have used the fund balance.
Yeah, so we, we passed our biennial budget last fall. Presumably, we budgeted for jail costs. And so, did we just make up that there was money there when we budgeted those dollars? Or did we cite a different revenue source?
Yeah.
Next slide.
So, I will say, so there's a cost allocation that happens between the county. When they, they create their estimated bill, and then they allocate it out, and we get that budgeted estimation. And at the very end, when they do their annual true-up, we get a settle and adjust bill. And where they're, they're actually truing up our allocated cost to their actuals. And that was a bit of, of a surprise in January of this year, that it was so high for 2024.
It's often slightly higher, but it was, it was way higher.
To be clear.
It was, yeah. It was over a million in this year.
1.5 million dollars.
With the potential of being nearly three this current year. So, within a five-year span, we're looking at a potential double in price with, as we're seeing here, roughly a 10% increase in ADP. And I think Jessica may mention this, but, but we're seeing, looking at county financials, that county cost of operations has only increased 10%. So, those two, and Jessica, I'm sorry, I'll let you.
Well, but, but it's based on bed nights, right? It's not, there's no inflator in the contract.
No, there is. That's exactly, the blue line is how much they're charging us. The red line is how much we are increasing our average daily population. So, yes, we have our population in the jail.
The same beds are costing more.
The same beds are costing double.
And that's in the contract, though?
And they've shown us no evidence in their operations that they're costing them that much.
That's why we don't have a contract, because we do not have an agreed-to method for them to charge us. That's, that's the reason we don't have a contract. Because, as they said, it, it appears to us that their costs have gone up to 10%, but their charges to us have gone up to have doubled. And we're, clearly, that's part of the issue that we're.
So, the delta that you're seeing between those lines is a growth of ADP. The orange line, 10% in growth. Again, orange pie chart is 13.9% of our overall population, so a fraction of the population, but the largest, you know, the, the largest city involved. And then the bill increase during that same, same time period has increased 78%, while their costs, if you were to look at what their operational costs during that same time period, have only increased 10%.
Am I reading this right? Does that say that of the jail population that's there, only 14% is from the city of Spokane?
That's correct.
Absolutely.
So, Jessica, just out of curiosity, how much, how much is two months of back pay to the county? Just give me a round figure.
About 1.3 million.
For two months?
When, just in 2021, that was roughly 300 grand, 400 grand?
We can have a separate conversation about this, but is that, the 14%, is that just misdemeanance, or is that?
Oh, yeah. So, let me, let me jump in. Okay. So, so because the county jail bill is a cost allocation, and nobody likes to hear that, but because they have to estimate how much they think it will cost to provide detention services in the upcoming year, it's cost allocation. So, how do they do that? So, to allocate the cost, what they do is they do it by participating jurisdictions. And the key driver is the average daily population percentage of a jurisdiction's inmates. So, the more inmates a jurisdiction contributes, and the longer they are detained, the higher the percentage for that participating jurisdiction. So, it is my understanding that the jurisdiction classification occurs at the charges level. So, if an inmate is booked on felony charges, it is the county's jurisdictions. Even if there's, if there's one felony and 18 misdemeanances, it's still the county's. But if it's a misdemeanor in nature, it would be the city's jurisdiction. So, that is why predominantly it is the county at, what, 82%, and then it's the city at about 14% just last year. That's about how it shook out.
But if somebody was arrested, that's a city of Spokane resident and had a felony, they would go to the county's number here?
That is my understanding.
But it has nothing to do with where you're a resident. It has to do with which agency arrests you, and then what your charges are. So, it has nothing to do with where you live.
Sure. So, SPD arrests them, it's a felony, it goes into the county's allocation. Okay.
Well, because those charges are being brought by the county prosecutor, not by the city.
And to piggyback off of that, that is exactly what the county was trying to approach us with, to say, okay, if, if, for example, there is a felony and 18 misdemeanances, we are going to proportionally charge you for the 18 misdemeanances. Obviously, which would increase this bill even more significantly.
So, the city of Spokane's ADP percentage in 2021 was about 10%, and now we see in 2024, it's about 14%, which equates to about a 35% increase over the, the three years. However, the city's bill has increased by 78% since 2021, with the largest increase being just last year in 2024. So, in total, the cost of running the jail is, appears to have increased by 10%. Again, that's what Matt mentioned. I'm getting that by looking at their overall, the county's cost allocation bill, and I'm adding up all the costs to all the jurisdictions, and in total, it looks like it's only increased by 10%.
And again, to just piggyback off of that fact, we, we saw that in the Q1 detention meeting, that the county's charge to the jail for administrative services has more than doubled from '24 to '25. So, something that we have very little control over, that's accounting services, similar to what we have, has doubled.
The county's inter-fund charges?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
To the jail.
To the jail.
No, from the jail to, yes, the county is saying jail, you pay us for.
Yes.
Which is now allocated out to all the participants. So, turning this over now to Jake to talk about the six-year forecast as required by SMC.
Jake, go ahead. I'm Jacob Miller. I'm one of our budget analysts. I want to start by framing this in terms of describing the differences between a budget and a forecast, in which case, this is a forecast. But we have a budget. It's a financial plan that is informed by our organization's goals and it's limited by resources. The forecast is a little bit different because it's based on historical actuals, along with current information about what will happen in the future, without regarding our resources at all. So, ultimately, the forecast supports long-term sustainability essentially by identifying future challenges, informing us of realistic service levels with and without additional funding, and most importantly, provides a foundation for labor negotiations to set realistic expectations. We all are aware of the, the contracts that were signed during the pandemic. They required us to use reserves. It's unsustainable entirely. So, going forward, future contracts, we'll need to return to a sustainable level back with revenues. Next slide, Matt.
Jake, can I comment, though, on that reserves that was used for the contract? That was reserved money, but that money had been specifically being set aside for the contract whenever it was agreed upon.
It wasn't, it wasn't above our target reserve levels, not at all. In fact, we weren't at our target budget reserve levels. So, it was taken from our, below our targeted budget reserve levels, which we are not back up to yet.
No, that was exactly the problem. When the administration brought the contract to be approved, there was no set aside. There was no, and we're going to have to pay for it, and here's how.
Which contract are we talking about?
All of the contracts that occurred during.
That's not true for the police guild. The police guild was set aside. That was four years, intereers, and that was intentionally set aside.
No, it's, but it wasn't because the reserves were not at the targeted level. So, it was set as.
Well, we didn't have a targeted level then because that was past two years ago, not.
No, no, there was. There, there was still a contingency reserve, a revenue stabilization reserve, and then.
And general, and general accounting practice level reserves. Sorry. I mean, the city was not at those levels. So, there wasn't any set aside above, above what is supposed to be maintained as a general accounting practice reserve.
And during, during that point, it was actually council that was pushing previous administration to set that aside in budgets that had expired, to say, here, here is your projected revenue, let's just say 240 million. We, we suggest you to harbor 5 million of that because there are expired contracts. The, the rebuttal that we received, that you all received, or previous council received from the administration, was that if you put that in the budget, you are setting a benchmark for them to go after, and that is the lowest that they will ever go. Is, now that they know that money is there, they will go above and beyond that, is, is the rebuttal that it was from previous administration. So, there was a push. There was a push. I think roughly 600,000 was saved in 2022. There was a delta that was saved and put into reserves, but obviously nowhere near the, the settle that was needed for retroactive for both police, FIRE, 270. And that's where a substantial amount of, of reserve dollars was taken to settle all of those contracts. And then there was also the, you know, the one-time add-to-pays that was retroactive for 270 as well.
That was our.
Some of it was our, yes.
So, giving an overview of the forecast, ultimately, the mayor alluded to this, but if our current state of being continues, the 2031 annual deficit is forecasted to be over 50 million, around 52 exactly. So, in addition to that, we have a cumulative deficit over that time period of over 200 million, which is kind of a hard number to really grab on to. It's nearing our annual revenues, essentially. At this rate, the current rate, the city will deplete reserves and unappropriated fund balance by the end of 2027. So, what can we do? Ultimately, we need to control costs across city.
Just wait. What you can do is call me a paramedic. I think I'm going to need some resuscitation right now. I'm sorry, Jake, too soon.
We've been there. We've been there, just getting ready for this. So, yep, I feel ya.
Pulling back. I'll pull it eventually. So, we, we also need to manage total cost of compensation in line with revenue growth, as we were prior to the pandemic. We also need to seek additional revenue sources, including grants, federal, state, private partnerships, and then evaluate the city assets that could be sold, buildings, land, things like that. So, general assumptions that are informing this forecast. On a national level, I'm assuming that we settle back to a rate of inflation around 2%. Interestingly enough, a few days ago, the rate of inflation increased, the June report came out, and inflation was at 2.7% after being at 2.4% in May. at two point seven percent after being at two point four percent in May. So it's going the wrong way for a month now. I don't know what that means, but anyway, this is assuming we settle at two percent, which is the federal reserve rate. Beyond that, I'm using the land capacity and growth projections from planning to inform population growth over a forecasted time period. That grows about a thousand people per year, which is an annual growth rate of zero point four percent. So let's jump right into it. The general fund revenue forecast. I have a table here with a lot of numbers, and we'll go through it representing dollars and millions. On the left side there, you have our major revenue categories with years as columns as we go across. The first data column is twenty twenty-four actuals, twenty twenty-five net, or amended budget with some adjustments that I'll go through, and then projections from there on out. The assumptions that are built in, that are built into this are that we don't pursue or have an approved property tax levy lift. So that is not assumed in here that that happens. No new sales taxes are assumed. However, the transfer in from the community safety sales tax is included in this. So any sales taxes beyond that are not assumed. And it also assumes that we revert to the twenty percent utility tax rate from twenty-one percent. We revert in twenty twenty-seven, that is. So looking at the property taxes there, I have our gray highlighted cells that'll help guide this. So in twenty twenty-five, property taxes, I have slightly adjusted downward for uncollectible property taxes. We're still digging into why that's increasing, but I'm just, it's just a slight adjustment to compensate for that. Two years following, in twenty twenty-seven, we are intending to resume the two million dollar annual contribution to FIRE pension fund. So that's what, that's what that dip in twenty twenty-seven is for property taxes. For sales taxes, so Connor talked about ERC projections and those being around one point eight percent, one point seven. I want to be a downer here, simply as a precaution. So because our sales tax data right now is implying that we'll end twenty twenty-five around zero percent above twenty-four, those two data, those two data points are equivalent here. So zero percent growth from twenty-four to twenty-five, one percent through the end of twenty-six, and then two percent in twenty twenty-seven, with two point two there on out. It very well could be better than that, but just trying to set a boundary here. This is how bad it could be.
Could it be worse?
Absolutely. Yeah, 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 that's it. I hope not, but it could be.
It could be, but this is on the conservative side.
This is on the conservative side, and we know sales taxes is historically the most volatile, as we saw in previous slides with Connor, and that we know that if, as interest earnings plateau, and they did probably in twenty twenty-three, not twenty twenty-four, as, as those rates decline, right, that helps the Fed and helps consumer spend, that impacts our interest earnings because we're directly attributable to bonds.
Okay, so moving over to expenses. This one's a little less busy, but we have more categories on the left. As we talked about, the contracts, the collective bargaining agreements that we currently have that were signed amidst the pandemic are certainly not sustainable, and that's majority of the story here. But you see an employee benefits highlight in twenty twenty-six. So most of our healthcare premiums have not been adjusted since the end of twenty twenty-one for a variety of reasons. Initially, it was to utilize some of the employee benefits fund balance because it was just growing faster than it needed to be, so we didn't need to keep charging departments more and more. And then at some point, transitions, transitions into, well, we can't increase it now. The budget's in a really rough spot. So anyway, it brings us to now, where we're anticipating increasing that in twenty twenty-six. Specific amount unsure of at this point, but the increase will begin, and we're anticipating that to be an annual increase from then on. Beyond that, the only other item of note is that transfers, operating transfers out are increasing in twenty twenty-six for a few reasons. Part of them is that the criminal justice assistance fund that might need support from the general fund. In addition to that, we have streets operations that is also trending toward needing some assistance from the general fund. So those are included in there, and then we have that transfer out jumping again in twenty twenty-seven as FIRE capital contributions increase from the general fund. So bring those together. The top-left chart takes those two tables we just looked at and charts them out. And you can see a chasm opens up as our revenues stall in twenty-six and twenty-seven, and our generally personnel expenditures just keep escalating in unsustainable fashion. The chart on the right is a what-if scenario of, well, what if we realign our CBAs with anticipated revenue growth? What does this look like? So if we limit each of those to a three percent annual total cost of compensation increase, it's still, it, it deals with about half of the problem going forward. So if we were to achieve that with the contracts, we would still have, you know, building out to a twenty-seven million dollar deficit in twenty thirty-one. So there's still action to be taken, whether that's finding additional revenues, having revenue sources approved by the public, cutting additional expense through reduction of FTE, or any other number of changes. And this was all based on, you know, information in the last couple of months. And like I talked about at the beginning, inflation has already jumped up, adding a variable that isn't accounted for. So this certainly can change over time. Some risks and sensitivities of the forecast include economic and demographic trends, so inflation, and our annual population growth. If it's above, great, that will help revenue. If it's below, then it hurts it. Legal and policy uncertainties, such as state and local laws and environmental regulations that impact our expenses or our ability to generate revenues. Our revenue risks include the fact that we are limited to a one percent annual increase to property taxes, and anything beyond that relies entirely on your construction value. So if construction slows down, so does our property tax growth. Sales taxes, slower population growth can limit that growth, and economic downturn can severely impact it. Some other risks to the revenues, intergovernmental revenues, like we just talked about at the beginning. We have no guarantees on state and federal grants or shared revenue calculations that fluctuate. Utility taxes, conservation efforts can impact revenues. We have some of that with water. Weather variability can impact usage and revenues as well. And interest earnings, when we invest, we have, we invest in long-term securities and a short-term pool, the local government investment pool with the state, and that's very, very sensitive to interest rate changes. So as those decline, so does our interest earnings. And then expenditure pressures, our cost personnel, first and foremost, collective bargaining, bargaining agreements are all up in the air essentially in the next couple of years. So it's a big question mark there. And the cost of health insurance premiums needing to increase again. And then beyond that, any deferred payments and purchases. I'm not referring to anything specifically there. It's just the potential there.
So this is jumping off to kind of what was touched on earlier with our grants department. As you all know, we created a grants department for a centralized resource, similar to what we have with accounting, but actually to go out and hunt for the funds that are out there and available to us. Skylar Brown will talk about that.
Hello, I'm Skylar Brown. I've got some contracts I haven't met. This is just kind of a quick slide. Our biggest client, obviously, CHHS right now, that's where we started and kind of branching out from there. This just shows, you know, that as of January to June of twenty twenty-five, we've done about fifteen million revenue and twenty-one million expenditures. Their expenditures are, with federal and state awards, are going to always pretty much exceed, if you're looking at a timeline, because the city pays for it and then we get reimbursed. So the funding will come back. Also, the expenditures can exceed revenues for the simple fact of, like, let's just say, the heart funds, because we've gotten revenue in prior years and now we're putting those expenses out into the public now. So we're not getting revenue this year, but we're using last year's revenues. So that's why those numbers will look different. And when you're ever dealing with grants, just know that most of the time, your expenditures are going to exceed your revenues, but they'll catch up.
Can that be represented in slides like this, like, here's the reverses that came in to fulfill those numbers?
Yeah, you can. We can do it, the way we do it when we do our draws and reimbursements with, with the federal government, state, is we pull the actual for the month, and then your total for the year, and the difference is going to be what you're going to be getting for that reimbursement coming out of the award. So you can definitely be on specific awards. I mean, there's a lot of awards, depending on what you're looking for. But I can pull it overall of, say, like CHHS, and you'll see that.
I'll just see the total amount there. That way, we know we're not spending more than the revenue that's coming in, just total.
Yeah. Typically, our grants are going to be a one-to-one ratio. We have, when we do closeout at period thirteen, they're always going to end up being zero-zero. If they're not for some reason, then that revenue needs to be, or the expenditures will need to be moved to some other source, because they were unvaluable, or the funding was discontinued, or some other reason. But typically, all federal and state awards are one-to-one, or there's sometimes the grant can be beneficial to where it's based on a project base, and they will give us additional funding above what usually would be.
Just to add to that a little bit, that, that is what happened with the, the federal cuts for grants that happened in the first quarter of this year. Obviously, we had several departments that were impacted, parks, CHHS, et cetera, that had awarded grants, had, had funds and expenditures associated with it, but were in fear of not getting reimbursement for expenditures already incurred. If that does continue to persist, that, as Skylar alluded to, that will be the city liability at that point.
Maybe I'd just add, sometimes there are grants that come from the feds or the state in which they're kicking off and giving us the opportunity to start something new, but it won't necessarily give us sustained funding. So that is something that we're also going to be tracking, because you hate to say no to a grant, but if it's a grant for something you can only do for two or three years, and then you don't have the funds after that, it's tricky. On the other hand, it's hard to say no if it's in public safety and it's aspirational, something that we want to get, want to get done, or some, some new personnel, or technology that we want to bring on, it's, it's hard to turn that down. But it comes with the risk of not always having sustainable funding.
The safer grant, safer grant is a prime example of that, right? It was, it was FIRE FTEs that were directly associated to it. Like, two years is what it funded, and then after those two years, we lost those, I think it was fourteen FTEs, and then had to go back out to the public for, for a voter-approved ballot to, to fund those FTEs.
A lot of those awards aren't for existing staffs. You have to get new, new staff members.
Right. So even if you have postings within your city, and it's, it's a posting that is, is within your budget, they won't allow you to add that. It's additional FTEs beyond that.
Yeah. I guess the ask is just showing the true-up at some point when it does get...
Yeah, I think the, the best way I would be able to show you is going back to like twenty twenty-four, and then you would see that we have a net zero.
So Skylar, I know you'll probably get to it, but just comes to my mind, I know we're applying for state funding for police officers through Governor Ferguson's initiative, which is just through twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So it's down the road, but we get money to hire new officers, and then we don't have sustainability funding based on some of the numbers. You're sure showing us that is a little concerning going forward.
Yeah, and maybe I'll touch on that in a few minutes.
Okay.
That's kind of like what the grants department's doing. It's kind of a slide that, it's my own slide, so you can go there. This one is, I just don't know the last time you guys kind of got an ARPA update and where we're at, so I kind of felt like I'd just throw one in here and kind of give you an update where we're at. Caleb Stanton has been right, he's over there. He worked with Michelle Murray prior to this. So basically, we have spent eighty-six percent of the funding. We have fourteen percent of the funding remaining, cash on hand. This was one of the ones that actually gave us cash ahead of the time. We have sixty-eight total projects, forty of them are depleted, and of the sixty-eight, four of those were canceled. Five of them are not started, but they all are predicted to start and spend on time if those ones not started. The one thing to keep in mind with ARPA is we cannot do any new projects, because one thing Caleb and I are monitoring now is projects that are ending, what money's going to be left over, and what do we do with that. And one thing to keep in mind is that we can do existing projects that we have already promised and allocated before, but we cannot go out and get new projects. And so depending on where those are at, we'll be reaching out to you all here probably the next couple of months about, hey, this is where we're at. What do we want to do for the last year, because this money has to be spent by twenty twenty-six, or go back to Cheshire, I think in twenty twenty-six.
When you reach out, give us a list of projects that we can add to, so we know where we might want to land with that.
Yeah, we're definitely working on that with Matt and Jessica, and we will have some future conversations. And then the last slide, this is kind of, you know, what's grants been doing. Kind of, this has really been coming to fruition since January, so it's kind of what's going on now and what we've been doing. And the first one's just like, we've done a hundred and fifty, assisted CHHS and some one-offs of a hundred and fifty contracts with subrecipients amendments. We've, we do our own contracts in-house with grants. And so that's one thing that we have accomplished. We also manage all the state and federal requirements and report requirements. Been going through the federal state audits right now. They're going really well. ARPA was audited this year, and Streets was audited. We, also, the city's updated, we have to have UBI numbers to get federal awards. Those are all updated through July now of twenty twenty-six. So we're all on pace on everything that we're required to do as a city. We are currently researching new citywide grant software. One of our vendors, we have, we used to have ESIPs here at the city, probably about eight years ago, seven, eight, seven, eight years ago. And we went away from that. We have some one-off software that we use, that we use for loan systems that are, it's called neighborly. So, but we have Quests that has to reunite, and we've been talking with them about one of their softwares, which is ESIPs, we used to have, to try and get some new software that allows us to do grant research. It has great research capabilities, but also be able to give visibility to everybody. You'd be able to go in and see those grants, where we're at drawing, citywide, if everybody was in there. So we're trying to get much more visibility, and anybody that has unlimited licenses would be able to go in there and see where we're at, and what awards we have, and what stage they're in. So it's something I know that everybody would like to see, so we're hoping to go down that avenue.
Excuse us, Scott, Councilman Vinkel.
On this, what do we think that the net add to the city has been after establishing the, the grants department?
Well, really, nothing's changed to the city for establishing that. We already have existing staff. We've actually just pulled our, pulled ourselves out there. One thing I was about to get into is the only newest thing we've done is add a citywide grant writer, which is Cole Wicker right here. He's been with us since May. But as for what is established, so the city has, we used to have a citywide grants department. And then when Sally Stouffer left, it split, she was grants, contracts, clients, purchasing, right? And so it split, and you ended up with the purchasing department, and then you ended up with grants under Michelle Murray. And to be honest, Michelle took on ARPA, but I was still doing the citywide work. And so when we are now looking forward, it's, and it's more of a help desk beyond that. And now, instead of making departments do their own grant work, there's still going to be departments doing their own grant work. But we want to be able to be there like, hey, you're at capacity. Maybe that's what I was showing my, what my county was doing. Maybe my county can, can help you. Caleb, or I have two other grants analysts that work on CHHS as well, can we do your compliance for you? Because a lot of the reasons we are finding no from departments is capacity. They do not have the capacity to take on more work, more compliance. They don't, they don't have people to understand it. And so what we're trying to do now is say, hey, we can get you funding. We can do, if you think you can handle it, Cole will write, write and help you with your grant application. If you need somebody to do compliance, we can help you there. If you need accounting, we can help you there. But we have to first get ourselves out there and know what people need, because all we have been is a help desk with full service to CHHS. And so going out and helping other departments is going to be, for me to answer that, is what can we actually do? But considering that we are still doing all of our same jobs and just taking on, can we get this out there? I don't have a great response to yet, except for in the one month that, this is where I was going with, with Cole, is that he's been here, we have applied for a COC UFA builds award, so that's been submitted for six million dollars. It's in collaboration with Catholic Charities. We've helped FIRE on a fifteen thousand dollar equipment grant that's been submitted. Cole's also looked at sixty different grant awards possibility. We sent ten out to other departments of... We sent 10 out to other departments of these possible applications that you'd like to go for. So just getting him in in this past two months is already 60 new opportunities we have looked at that possibly could come into the city. And part of my next slide there is we're also looking at new, new ways of how to help our outside partners besides just our internal. So one thing Matt and I have been collaborating on, we, I've reached out to MRSC and gotten guidance from them on, is what, what if there's foundational grants, which the city's not ready to go into, which Cole's been looking into, what if there's foundational grants or state awards that we're not eligible to do, but let's say our community, our community center partner is, and they can apply, and, but they don't have the resources or availability to manage that award. Can we help them apply, and then they either hire us as a accounting agency firm, or they pay us through the grant award in order to, for like MLK Center, get an AC unit? And so these are, way new initiatives, we're looking at like, how can we help our partner agencies that we know need funding, that we don't have funding for, for them? But as a state, there's not a lot of availability to that, but it's not a profit or a foundational money is there. So we're hoping that's a big new avenue we're looking for, and the response we got from MRSC is, yes, that's a go, you can do that. And so Caleb and Cole, I've kind of set them as a team, this is your compliance, and this is your writer. And they went and met with Frida at MLK last week, had an initial conversation with her to see how she's feeling about that, and it's leading towards positive avenues.
Yeah, ultimately, what that brings, to answer your question, Councilmember Winkle, is, is more resources for the entire region, not just the city of Spokane, but to deploy them out to the whole region. We obviously have a lot of expertise, we have very limited capacity, but if we can't, knowing all of our constraints that are out there, help our region and do that as an organization, that's what we're trying to do as, as a grants department, whether it be internally, we're, we're applying for grants, or we're partnering with agencies that are, that are within our region.
So Skylar, speak to me about the administrative fees that go with the grants. I know there was some of them that we were actually subsidizing, the administrative fee was not actually covering the cost of administering the grants. So how is your department looking at that going forward? I know there's, there's a range for fees.
Yeah, so that, that can be dependent on won the award, what it's allowed, what you're allowed to charge to it. What, what is the award, right? And so, so, you know, a lot of times, somebody's like, well, we're gonna go out for a grant award, we're only gonna get capital, we just want the money, we already have our staff covered here, we don't need to worry about getting money back. And that's for the direct staff working on that project, right? And so it's like, okay, but the award might allow for you to get that direct staff, so why not go for it? But not only is it getting the direct staff, it's kind of these internal service funds that we're talking about, where the accounting, it's adding those indirect costs. And depending on the award, you can also add indirect costs, which can be, we don't have federal negotiator rate, but we have allocation plans, and we have the de minimis rate. So de minimis has been bumped up from 10 to 15%. So any staffing cost you can get at minimum usually 15%. But depending on your department, you have an allocation rate. So for like CHHS, on salaries, benefits, we get 78%. We do use that on all of our homeless funding. We get this direct salaries, direct benefits, and 78% of indirect cost back, which covers Dawn's time, my time, we're not directly charging, but we're indirectly getting that back. So a department like that, you know, if on a $4 million salary benefit cost, the, the city, we, we use about $300,000 in city general money. So it, it, there is a big significant look that we need to be utilizing when we apply for grants, put administration in there and recoup indirect costs, because a lot of these things that we're looking at, we could be recouping that cost. And not looking at just saying, hey, we just need capital, we need a little extra.
I think, I think you hit the nail on the head. That's the other value added, is that a lot of people are, departments within our own, within our own organization are applying for grants, not knowing that they can be applying for this administrative cost as well. So your grant award is 250,000, you're eligible for 275 because you, you have the administrative overload on it, but you just never applied for it.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. I think this is an area where we haven't been generating as much revenue as we could have been, and this is a great add to the, to the city.
It's covering our costs.
And as for like my department, how you, how we look at it in the future and going, and like I said, actually, most of my staff are already covered by grants or indirect. The only, only one that we don't right now is because grant writing, Cole, is not usually a cost that you can put towards grants. But in the future, I hope to have him as part of the indirect pool, so all the grants we do get, and we're applying for, and our staff, our direct costs are going, indirect will come back and cover it. And so essentially, it should be, like I told you with grants, it's a net zero. You should be, everything's covered. And so that, that's where we're leaning towards.
As customers expand, we're hoping grants, grants office expands, right, to recruit those costs. I know we're bumping up against time here.
Can I just do one last thing?
Yeah.
That picture right there, and this is for everybody, this is all departments, everybody in this room, on the grants SharePoint page, now is the little blue link, you can click it, say, hey, I need help researching, I have a grant award I want you to look at, I need an application help, I need help on compliance, and that goes to Cole and Caleb, and they are more excited to help everybody, so start using it.
Yeah, great call-out. So just to close it off, I mean, obviously, a lot to take in. We're doing a lot of work to mitigate some of these expenses. There's a, there's a certain degree of revenue that we don't have much control over, obviously. We're currently, within the budget office, building a very granular programmatic expenditure chart so that we can have very detailed conversations with our department heads and, and difficult conversations without question. So having said all that, does anybody have any questions?
Any other questions from councilmembers? There's no high note to leave on?
It was grants.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, thank you very much. We know we have some challenges before us, and we just have to be diligent in dealing with that. That beats it. Have a good afternoon.
Thanks, everybody.